All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, four thirty PM, Thursday, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, City Hall, Council Chambers. First item would be to approve the minutes of the March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, meeting.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion and a second? Everybody signify by aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We're gonna have to do a roll.
Everything has to be roll call.
We're gonna do this by a roll call, so...
I will call a roll, if that's acceptable.
That would, that'd be great, Dave.
Okay, Ms. Mako?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Carnetts?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Ox?
Ox, and yes.
And Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Motion's approved unanimously.
Okay. Item three would be to conduct a public hearing to consider the application of Jerry and Carol Miners requesting a variance from the city code to allow a five-yard setback, or, excuse me, five-foot setback and a five-foot rear yard setback for the purpose of placing a ten-by-twenty storage shed on property legally described as lots one, block one, Maha's second addition. The street address of the property is seventeen-twenty-nine Oakwood Avenue. The required side and rear yard setbacks are ten feet. Look for staff.
Okay, so the Jerry and Carol Miners are requesting a variance to allow a detached storage building to be located five feet from the side property line and five feet from the rear property line. The current land use designation in that neighborhood is low-density residential. Surrounding land use is low-density residential to the north, south, east, and west. It's zoned R-one, single-family zoning district, and surrounding that property is also zoned R-one to the north, the south, the east, and the west. Currently, it is a single-family home, and the area uses currently around that property are also residential to the north, south, east, and west. There was a public hearing notice published in the New Ulm Journal on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty. So the, for a description or background on this application, the property owners are proposing to place a ten-by-twenty-foot pre-manufactured private storage building on their property, five feet from the east property line, which would be the side property line, and then five feet from the south property line, which would be the rear property line. The building is planned to be on skids. Section nine-point-one-zero subdivision five C of the city code requires that there should be a side yard on each side of a building, each yard having a width of not less than ten feet. And then section nine-point-one-four subdivision three G-two accessory buildings states that a detached accessory, a detached accessory building not over one story and not exceeding fifteen, sixteen feet in height shall occupy no more than thirty percent of the area of any rear yard and shall comply with the definition of a private garage, section nine-point-zero-three, providing further that no detached accessory building shall be located within ten feet of the rear property line. This building won't be over sixteen feet, and it does comply with the thirty percent, not taking up more than thirty percent of any rear yard. The west property line follows the center line of a rav, of the ravine, and from the west property line to the southwest corner of their house, there is roughly a twenty-foot elevation change, and that's over a distance of sixty feet. So from their west property line to their southeast corner of their house, there's roughly a thirty-three-and-a-half, or thirty-three-point-three percent slope. So it's a very steep slope from the corner of their house down to the west property line. There is approximately twenty-five feet from the house to the east side property line, and then another thirty feet from the house to the rear property line. You can see that on attachment four. To date, our office has not received any comments on this various variance application. There are some alternative actions that could be considered. One would be not to reduce the side yard setback or to reduce the rear yard setback, or you could lessen the variance amount. We did provide five attachments, the first one being the variance application. Attachment two is a map showing the location of the property. Attachment three is a zoning map. Attachment four is a site plan, and we also, in that site plan, depicted where that building would approximately be located on the property. And then attachment five, we had ground-level photographs, and again, we added in what that building would look like sitting on that property. Staff does recommend approval of the variance for the following reasons. The purpose of the new storage building is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the use of this property. The ravine on the west side of the property doesn't allow for the placement of a building in that area. And then the third is the placement of the storage building does not change the essential character of the neighborhood, as this site will continue to be used for residential purposes. We do recommend one condition, that the applicant should locate the property boundaries and verify the location of the proposed building on the site with city staff prior to placing the building. Mr. Jerry Miners is here, and assuming would be willing to answer any questions you might have for him on his variance application.
Thank you, John. I will remind everybody, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard on this matter... Open it up for discussion. Anybody have anything?
Is that an alleyway next? When I'm looking at attachment four, I'm, is that an alleyway or a driveway? Does that go all the way through?
The neighbor's driveway back to Lynn Home has a driveway that comes basically right by the edge of my land.
Okay.
And part of the problem with variance and stuff that I want is because his driveway goes back there, but also when they divided the property up, for some reason, there's a garage that sits about this far from my property line.
That's what I was looking at, yeah.
You know, so what we're, our intent is, is to try to get it as close to the east boundary and the south boundary as we can to more space between his garage and the shed.
Okay.
And so sitting alongside of it, for whatever reasons, fire reasons, whatever else, we're gonna put it as close as we can to that corner. He's also allowed, given me permission to use that driveway if I need to be able to get in and out of it.
Taxes.
Very, very rarely, but to try to put it as inconspicuous, but also away from his building, and also we're gonna try to match it perfectly with the color of the house and stuff, so it's a well-made business. Building by Proshed out of Mountain Lake, and it'll actually be an attractive building.
Because when I look at the picture, there's a truck or something parked back there, and it looks like there's two other outbuildings back.
The two outbuildings are his. His, he got a double garage and another one. There's, one of my trailers is parked right on the boundary line, the blue one, and then I've got a four-wheeler that's parked right back there, and there's a couple of other things. So we just moved in about three weeks ago, so trying to figure out where things are gonna go, and once we get the shed up, some of those things will disappear, so.
Well, it seems that there's plenty of other buildings back there. I don't see...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and he's looking to put a complimentary shed in, and he's had conversations with the neighbor, and it's something we have done in the past with, and being consistent within the community, you know, I don't...
I was just concerned, if it was an alleyway, if he could get to it, but if the neighbor is allowing you to go in...
Yeah.
More power to you, yeah.
And if for some reason he'd say, "No, I can go across our yard," he'd be like, "It's not for me."
Anybody else?
Is there, is there any concern with it being that close to the driveway, that he won't be able to, is there enough space for him to be able to see if someone's coming when he turns out? It's just kinda hard to see from the picture.
Oh, yeah, he's got, there's probably eighty feet of driveway yet before he gets to the road past the building.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
No other discussion?
Mr. Schnobrick, I have one question. When people come for these variances, is there anything, and he already answered my question with the new shed, is there anything that says that, once they get the variance, that they can't put, is there anything about the building code, how the shed should be, or look, or design, or anything like that? No?
You know, the...
Just the size, I mean, a thousand square feet, sixty feet in height.
So down the road, if we ever get this, somebody actually could bring in a horrible-looking shed if...
We put up whole sheds and stuff before, I mean, it's, but there's nothing for aesthetic criteria.
Okay.
If you so desired, you could stipulate as a condition that the, for example, that the color of the shed matched the color of the house. You could stipulate that it has a certain type of design. So you, you have, through the condition process, the ability to, you know, establish those kind of standards if you want to.
Jerry already answered our question already, where the shed was coming from, so I was just looking for down the road.
Sure, yeah.
It would just be the size then of the building.
For some reason, they had to get moved for some reason.
Yeah. Ask one more time if we have any more public comments out there, and Nate's signifying no, so I'm gonna close the public hearing.
And just one last thing to say, and this isn't regarding the permit, but whoever is speaking on the phone, if you wouldn't mind just announcing who you are when you make a comment, so then anybody listening in the public knows who that would be. That's it.
Thank you, John. Well, I'm in favor of it, and I think it would be complimentary, and so I'm gonna, everybody signify by aye, and we're gonna call a roll call for this.
First, we have to have...
I'll make a motion to recommend the initial use permit.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a...
The recommended conditions?
With the conditions.
Okay.
Correct.
So we have a motion and a second, and we're gonna go to Dave Schnobrick to call roll.
Okay, so we're gonna call roll. Ms. Mako?
Yeah.
Mr. Carnetts?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Ox?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Motion was approved unanimously.
Motion carried. Next item of business will be to consider the application of Brett Meyer requesting an interim use permit to allow the operation of a part-time gunsmithing business in his residence and detached garage, and the property legally described as lot four, block one forty, north of Center Street. Street address of the property is one fifteen, North Washington Street.
Okay, so the property is located west of North Washington Street and north of First North Street. The deadline for a decision on the part of the city is June thirteenth, two thousand twenty. The land use designation, according to the comprehensive plan, is low-density residential. The land use designation for surrounding properties to the north, south, and west is also low-density residential. To the east, it's low-density residential and public slash semi-public. Zoning designation for the property is R-two, single and two-family residence district. The surrounding zoning to the north, south, and west is R-two, and to the southeast is R-three, which is multiple-family residence district. The current site land use is a single-family dwelling. Current area land uses are single-family dwellings surround the property on all sides, and then a church and apartment complex are located to the southeast. Notice of the public hearing was provided to all property owners within three-hundred-fifty feet of the subject property and was published in the journal on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Regarding public comments, as of today, we have received two statements, and they are listed as attachments, and we will read those statements at the end of the staff report. Project description, this is the city's third request for an interim use permit. The ordinance establishing this permit was adopted by the city council on April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, so we've had it for approximately a year. The intent of allowing an interim use is provided in section nine-twenty-two subdivision two of the city code, and there are four reasons. Reason number one is to allow a land use for a limited period of time that reasonably utilizes the property in a manner that is otherwise not consistent with the comprehensive plan nor permitted in the applicable zoning district. Two, to provide the city with a reasonable degree of discretion in determining the suitability of certain designated uses at certain times for specified zoning districts. Three, to allow a use that is presently acceptable but not permitted within the zoning district and with anticipated development may not be acceptable in the future. Or four, to allow a temporary use of a property until a particular date, until the occurrence of a particular event, or until zoning regulations no longer permit it. The applicant's proposed use of the property does not meet the definition of a home occupation since it utilizes an accessory building. Approval of an interim use permit application requires the city to find that the criteria provided in section nine-point-two-two subdivision five of the city code will always be met. The review criteria and the applicant's response to them can be found on page two of the application. In this instance, the applicant has provided a separate sheet with responses to six of the criteria. In approving a permit, the city must adopt and impose such reasonable conditions and requirements as it deems necessary and appropriate to ensure continued compliance with the permit review criteria. The proposed business would primarily be located in the garage at the rear of the property. The applicant anticipates having ten customers per week. There is room on site for two parking spaces at the rear of the property, and the city has issued three home occupation conditional use permits since nineteen-seventy-seven for similar types of business, one in nineteen-seventy-nine and two in nineteen-ninety-six. There are six attachments. We have the application, we have the site location map, we have a zoning district map, we have a site drawing of the property provided by the applicant and staff, we have ground-level photographs of the property provided by the staff, and then we have the two public comments. I should note that the application also includes a floor plan for the garage space. Staff recommendation, staff would recommend approval of the request for the following reasons. The application complies with the review criteria found in section nine-point-two-two subdivision five with conditions. It is anticipated that a limited amount of customer traffic will be generated by this business. Third, there is adequate amount of off-street parking on the applicant's property, and then fourth, the applicant has indicated that he will properly insulate the walls, which should contain normal day-to-day dust, odor, unsightliness to with, to being within the building. I assume insulation will also reduce the amount of noise generated by the business. Conditions. Now, before we get into the conditions, I should note that in the past, we've had conditions for interim use permits, and then we've had conditions for gunsmithing businesses, and so what we've done here is kinda put these together. So condition number one, the applicant agrees to sign the consent agreement with the city. That's a requirement for an industrial use permit. The interim use permit approval is for a period of five years from the date of city council approval. That amount of time, I had a conversation with Brett about that, so you won't find it in the application, but we did speak on that topic. Three, the applicant should not operate the business on the premises outside of the hours of seven AM to ten PM, Monday through Friday, and nine AM to nine o'clock PM Saturday and Sunday. Four, the applicant will ensure that the business complies with city code standards for odor, dust, vibration, smoke, fumes, or gases and unsightliness. Five, the sign on the property shall not exceed two square feet. Again, that is a city code requirement. Six, customer parking will only take place on the applicant's property and not in the alley right-of-way or on area neighbor's property. And then seven, the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit and consent agreement with the Brown County Recorder's Office. So now let's go to the conditions associated with this specific business. Number eight, the applicant will not conduct retail sales of business-related products on the property. Nine, business operations will not generate noise that violates section eight-point-oh-eight of the city code. So obviously, that's an existing city code requirement, but we want the applicant to be aware of that particular requirement. Ten, there will be no discharge of firearms on the property. Eleven, there will be no storage of ammunition on the property beyond that necessary for the applicant's personal use. Twelve, before opening the business, the applicant will obtain appropriate licenses or approvals from the Department of Justice, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives to conduct a gunsmithing business. The applicant will comply with and maintain the necessary licensing during the operation of the business. Thirteen, all firearms will be stored in a secured locker located within a structure on the property. And fourteen, the applicant will not store or work on more than sixteen firearms at any one time. The number sixteen is something that I found on previous permits that had been issued for this type of business. Then you have provided two motions, one a motion of approval and one a motion of denial. So I would like to comment on the communications that, that we received. I indicated to you that we received two of them. The first was from, was sent to me by email, and it reads as follows. It says, "Dave, I have no problem with Brett Meyer starting a gunsmithing business out of his home slash garage." The name is Jeff Anderson. The second communication came from Mr. James Johnson. He owns the property at one-oh-six North Washington Street, and I would note that Mr. Johnson lives in St. Paul. And his email reads as follows, "Dear New Ulm Community Development Director Schnobrick, I am writing to express my concerns leaning toward object, objecting to the granting of the interim use permit allowing for the operation of a part-time gunsmithing business in my neighborhood. I am concerned that this opens up my neighborhood to other business. Does this set a precedent to allow for home businesses being started?" And so this is a question that I did answer, I have already answered to Mr. Johnson, and that is that the city has allowed home businesses with a conditional use permit. We term them home occupations. We also allow professional offices, and that has been allowed since nineteen-sixty-eight. So we have a long history of allowing home businesses. So we have a long history of allowing home businesses. Continuing on then, I fear the safety of families and children in the neighborhood is compromised with this specific business. I am concerned that a shop advertising that it sells guns will attract undesirable elements to the neighborhood. Now you will note that one of the conditions that was recommended by staff is that there would be no retail sales of items. Then it continues with all of the available business vacancies, why can't the applicant utilize existing spaces available throughout the city instead? I request that I know the status of other interim use applications approved in single and two-family residence districts in the city of New Ulm and how often they are approved. I also responded to that particular question. We have allowed two, we have received two applications for interim use permits. We have approved both of them. One was for the operation of a woodworking business out of a garage on North Broadway, and the second one was the float tank therapy business on South Ridge Road. Continuing, I am interested in knowing that the applicant possesses a federal firearms license and is a Minnesota licensed gunsmith and has all the liability insurance one would require to protect the public. Does the applicant, does the proposed applicant satisfy licensure requirements by possessing a federal firearms license and have three years of experience? Does the applicant have technical skills that include knowledge about and the ability to use chisels, files, edge finders, wrenches, checkering tools, hand tools, drill presses, and polishing tools? They must be skilled at grinder, mill, and lat, lat operations. My understanding is that the applicant must possess, must pass a criminal background check and may not have any misdemeanor convictions which will automatically disqualify them. They must be at least twenty-one years of age and may not exhibit any substance abuse or addiction. Potential gunsmith may not have a mental health history. I would encourage the New Ulm City Council to deny the request at this time. Signed, James Johnson, Jr. Mr. Meyer has provided us with a response to several of the questions that were posed in Mr. Johnson's email, and so I would like to read the question and then provide you with Mr. Meyer's response. Question number one, have you considered other locations for your business in New Ulm where this type of use would be allowed? The answer, yes. Due to the anticipated low volume of work that I will be doing, it would be cost prohibitive at this time to rent or lease a commercial space to run this business out of. I also want to be as close to home as possible so I can be near my family and young children as much as possible. I plan to only work a maximum of ten to fifteen hours a week at this business. If the business were to grow to a point to where it was turning into more than fifteen to twenty hours a week, I would start considering moving it into a commercial space, at which time it would hopefully be cost-efficient to do such a move. I am a full-time chiropractic doctor, so I will not allow this business becoming a full-time business without moving it to a commercial location and hiring help so I can focus on my chiropractic clinic. Question number two, do you currently possess a federal firearm license or, and FFA is listed on the sheet, it should be FFL, as a licensed gunsmith? Answer, I have previously had a federal firearms license or FFL. While you do not need a license specifically naming anyone a gunsmith, you do need an FFL license to conduct any gunsmithing business for any customers paying or not. The purpose of the FFL in my case is to allow me to legally take possession of a customer's firearm for any gunsmith work longer than one day, or if they leave the premises while their firearm is being worked on. Question three, did you pass the criminal background check in order to obtain your FFL? Being a doctor, I have passed both state and federal background checks. When I apply for the FFL, I see no reason why I would not pass another background check. And Mr. Meyer maybe can address this at the end of this, but there is kind of a sequence to events here that will kind of bring this in to make a little bit more sense for the commission. Four, are there any other local or state licenses you have obtained for the purpose of gunsmithing? Answer, there are no required licenses outside of an FFL to legally conduct gunsmithing activities for customers in the state of Minnesota. Many gunsmiths are trained on the job, and some of the top rifle builders in the country were self-taught. Question five, do you carry additional liability insurance for your gunsmithing operation? Answer, there will be a one million per occurrence, two million aggregate liability insurance on the business in line with standard business liability insurance practices. Question six, do you have three years or more of experience as a gunsmith or working on firearms? Answer, yes. I have been building custom high-end target rifles and custom hunting rifles for over ten years, which would encompass the majority of my intended business. I worked with my wife's grandfather for two years before he passed away. He was a master gunsmith and had over fifty years of experience building custom bench rest target rifles, custom hunting rifles, and did general gunsmith repair work. I then worked for a second gunsmith for an additional two years. I had about forty years of experience both in general gunsmith repair work and building higher-end hunting and target rifles. Since that time, I have honed my skills on my own firearms to create some very nice rifles, and I am always striving to build a finer rifle. Both of the aforementioned gunsmiths ran full-time gunsmith shops out of their private residence, and both at one time employed three to five people in another community. Question seven, do you have the technical skills and knowledge needed to use all of the tools involved in gunsmithing? These tools would include the ability to use chisels, files, edge finders, wrenches, checking tools, drill presses, and polishing tools, as well as the ability to use a grinder, mill, and lat operation? Yes. Okay, the answer is yes. I have a garage full of all these tools and many more. I have been working with wood and metal machines for about twenty-five years. I have been machining metal and doing machinist work for the past ten years at a high level, specifically focusing on the proper fitment and safe tolerances of assembling and fitting parts to a firearm. The skills needed to do the type of work that I intend to do for customers is not learned overnight with a weekend course or even in several months. It takes many years of practice, guidance, studying, and more practice to build a firearm at the level that I build them. Each repair, alteration, or build that I am responsible for must meet my very high-quality standards before I would allow it to leave my shop. Many general gunsmith standards would not meet my standards. I have had an abundance of guidance in my early years with a combined ninety years of teaching knowledge by my mentors and have spent several thousand hours on my own researching, practicing, and honing these specific skills. Each rifle I build can take anywhere from twenty to a hundred hours to complete on average.
Thank you, Dave. Open up for some discussion.
Mr. Chair, if maybe we can have just Brett go to the podium and maybe just tell us a little bit about what the schedule is to, you know, acquire the license and to be able to conduct the business.
Brett, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Brett Meyer. My, like, physical address?
Yep.
One fifteen North Washington Street in New Ulm, Minnesota. As far as obtaining a federal firearms license, the process it goes through is first you need local government approval, which is you guys, and then after that, you apply for an FFL, you get fingerprinted, you get a passport photo taken, basically, you send in an application fee, and they run background checks on you. So you send in all this information, and then the FBI or the ATF goes through and they check you out and they make sure everything's legit, and they will then go through a process as if they do decide that they're going to approve you, they will come out and they spend, I believe it's about two days, going over all the rules and regulations of the different requirements that they require for you to properly and legally run this business. So that's kind of the, in a nutshell, how it works.
Thank you, Brett. Nate, do we have any call-ins or anything?
Yes, I do have one question.
Go ahead, Brett.
About one of the requirements for a gunsmithing business. I think it was the sixteen-gun rule. So I was talking to my wife, and my wife grew up in this business with her grandfather, and he was a very big, pretty big gunsmith operation that he ran. And we were talking, and we were just wondering about that number because at times when some of these rifles that I build can take weeks, if not months, to get parts. So if I have, say, ten guys that want rifles built, and I'm sitting on ten different guys' parts, or gals, or whatever, and I'm waiting two months, another big part of this business would be, come deer hunting season, we get a lot of guys that would want to come in and get their firearms cleaned and gone through and checked and make sure they're safe and everything. So if I was sitting on, you know, ten firearms, and then I get, you know, another five or six guys coming in, want things cleaned or whatever, then I'm kind of stuck not being able to take on more customers, and I don't impis, sorry, don't anticipate doing, you know, like fifty or a hundred, but that number can fluctuate depending on the time of the year. So that number, to me, is a little on the low side, so that was my only question.
Dave, where did we get that, the sixteen from?
That was from previous conditional use permits that we issued for gunsmithing businesses. As far as, I expect it probably was a number that was provided by a previous applicant, that that's what they thought they would, you know, that would be the, they wouldn't exceed that number. I'm not aware that it is, there's any strong reason for it or requirement. I think it more was based on a previous application.
And then, Dave, do we currently have any gunsmithing businesses that are home occupational, like this currently running?
Well, you know, we've previously issued, you know, three permits, but they're somewhat dated, and I don't know if they're in operation or not.
Who do we call it, reasonable amount, reasonable amount?
Could do that, or you could just eliminate the requirement.
I kind of wondered about that, too. Being that I spend a lot of time with my husband at firearm repair shops, we just worked all month today, sixteen seemed like a very low number to me. And I didn't realize that you built that many guns, but it just seemed like sixteen was a low.
What's a reasonable amount to you?
Depends on the time of the year. I mean, like I said, it, it could, it would depend. I don't see myself doing more than like fifty, because I think that would be a lot in that location. If I were to move to another location, that's a whole, you know, different thing, but, like I said, it, you know, when I build these rifles, it takes time to get parts, and when you get, when you're sitting on these, you know, you could sit on a dozen of them just waiting for parts, and then as parts come in, you finish one, that goes away, another one might come in, and you're, it's, it's just an endless cycle.
I have a question, do you build the guns from scratch, just for show or not, I mean to sell, and you have so many of them on hand to sell, or do you just basically fix So, so in a cabinet, if I come to your place and I'm going to see a cabinet of ten guns, are they going to be for sale, or you're just going to be fixing the guns, or you're going to be actually selling them?
Well, under those conditions, I wouldn't be able to retail anything.
You can't retail.
Retail, that's okay.
But so you're build, but you're building to order?
Basically, yeah. I would, I would like to have that ability to have like one or two sitting on a shelf somewhere and say, hey, this, you know, so, because guys like to grab them and, you know, feel them and...
My question is safe capacity.
Yeah, for like a gun safe?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming you're locking everything, it's a requirement.
Yeah.
That everything be locked.
Right.
So I would, the sixteen-gun capacity, it would have to depend on what is the capacity of your safe.
So that would be a lot of the gunsmiths that I've known in the past, and just a prenomer to that, the ATF doesn't actually require you to lock anything up other than a door, a locked door. So that's an ATF thing, but most guys that I've seen outside of old-school gunsmiths that just have everything sitting out everywhere, they'll usually get a cage, like a steel cage of some sort, or a reinforced room that's locked, a room locked inside of the structure that you're, so it's locked twice. So that's typically how it's done because it gets to be, at times, it can be, and probably not in my case, but it, it could be a volume that, you know, I would need four gun safes to hold everything in it, and it would be more feasible to put like a reinforced metal cage or a, you know, reinforced, highly reinforced room or something like that, that you could just walk in and everything would be there, so. I will have at least one gun safe in there.
What about security, is the building alarmed or?
It will be.
Okay, because I know my brother's a smithing or a gun dealer business.
Yeah.
And everything there, he's got very highly armed and has had problems.
Yeah, it'll be, my plan is to CCTV and then an alarm system.
Okay.
And then everything gets double locked.
Makes me feel...
Yeah, the surveillance is one of my questions, thanks for bringing that up.
So building a gun to order does not mean retail, I would assume. If you're building a gun from scratch to order, that is not defined as retail, because retail would be...
No, I wouldn't, I think retail is where someone stops by and...
Would have been like Red Slow selling guns or, yeah, okay.
I just want to confirm to the public that you do not store ammo on your place just for your personal use, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I don't intend to sell ammunition.
I think that sixteen rule, I think we should take up or, or change the number or get rid of it completely.
I would support that.
Eliminating point number fourteen until, you know...
Number fourteen bullet, do you want to put a limit on it or just?
I would say eliminate, eliminate it.
Or put, put within reasonable manner, you know, or...
Who defined reasonable?
Correct.
I think we, I think we either change the number or eliminate the number, and I think that's too gray of a word.
I think we eliminated them.
Does someone on the phone have a question?
I, I would, this is Kate Mochill, I have a couple of questions, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kate.
Um, I had one question around the federal firearms license, I think, Mr. Myers, you said you'd had one in the past?
Yes, I have.
Is that right?
Yes, and I, I also, I also worked for Cabela's for two years in the gun department, and I sold a lot of firearms. They sold thousands of firearms when I worked there.
Right, so, so that license, you no longer have that license?
No, I, I, at the time, I, I got, I let it go, you basically let them laugh. You basically let them lapse. And I let it lapse because I was going back to school and I was focusing on my professional career and that wasn't a priority for me at that time.
Okay. And the second question I had is, I wondered if you have some idea of what your timeline is for some of the work on the building in the alley? Will you be, where you'll be doing this work? Do you have any of how that's going to move forward?
Um, yeah, I'm actually working on it currently. I'm hoping, if you guys give me approval, it'll be, I'm having power run out there soon and then I've got, or better power, run out there soon. And then I've got, I'm hoping in the next month or two, but I won't start doing this business until everything in the building is set up the way I want it.
And you would anticipate then storing the guns that you're working with in that building? That's where your secure location would be?
Yeah, so I actually, I'm going to, that garage is split kind of in third, two-thirds and a third. So the two-third is a larger portion on the main floor. I took, actually, I'm taking all the windows out of there. I put a newer reinforced door in there actually yesterday. I'm taking, there's a side, it used to be a barn. So there's actually an old barn door on the side. That's going away.
Yeah.
And then actually, my plan is to put a stairwell up because there's a second floor in there. My plan is to put a stairwell up to the second floor and then that will allow me to, I can have cages or a safe or whatever up there and everything will get stored up there.
Yeah, I just took a drive through the alley yesterday. I live kind of in the neighborhood and I, the building doesn't look that secure to me as yet. And I just wondered where you were at with thoughts on that.
Yep. No, it's, I've got some work to do yet, but it's, I mean, like I said, it's, it's, this business wouldn't start operation until all that is finished.
If I can ask a question, when would you anticipate that would be?
Hopefully no later than mid to end of July, so...
I've got a question. Dave, would, or maybe this would be for Elwood. Would we be required, or just to do a follow-up check that he does have a secure location? Would, would staff be checking that? Maybe, you know, to confirm that he has a secure location?
Yeah, we could, we could do that if that's something that...
I think that's, I think that's being fair, you know, just to make sure, you know, rather than we have an incident or if something would ever happen, then, you know, that he calls.
If I could maybe suggest to the commission, based on the discussion, that maybe I, or number 13, we could change that to read all firearms will be stored in a secured location rather than a secured locker?
And then eliminate number 14 completely?
Yeah, well, that's, I think, what, what you...
What we're talking about.
Change number 14 to inspection?
No. Change number, just eliminate 14 completely, completely.
We, Larry had wanted to say inspection.
I had asked about the inspection.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Doing a follow-up, a preliminary look at it before he starts occupying his building.
So that, so...
This is Kate Mako. One more quick question. How, how long of a process is it to, to get your federal firearm license renewed and up and running? Is that a long process?
Uh, it's usually anywhere from 30 to 60 days. No, no, it's usually at least 30 days and usually no longer than 60 days.
Okay, thanks.
This is Ashley Akis. I have one question. The renovations that you're making to the garage or barn or whatever you want to call it, the facility, are those changes going to be so significant that if you should move from the residence, not your business move, but you physically, like your family, you move somewhere else in town, is it going to make it more difficult to sell that property due to the renovations that you're doing to that facility? Or is it going to enhance that if you should sell your house down the road?
It should enhance it quite a bit.
Okay, so if you're not making any changes, that would be really difficult for someone to, like, there's no, like, big benches or tables that are going to be like to, it wouldn't make sense for another person to use someday for something?
No.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Meyer?
I just want to thank him for following through on all these answers and everything else. Did a nice job.
We'll look for a motion.
Make the motion that we approve with the condition that 13 stays stored in a secure room or cage?
Location.
Location. And 14 be the condition that we have the, that the premises be inspected prior to opening.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. We'll look for...
Call the roll. Ms. Mako?
Um, yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yep.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Ox?
Yes.
And Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous vote.
Motion carried.
Correct. So this is a recommendation to the city council. They will meet next Tuesday at 4:30 in this room.
In this room, yes.
But it could be a similar arrangement.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett. Good luck. Item four is reports. So 4.1, city council decisions concerning planning commission matters in April of 2020.
Okay. At the April 7 meeting, city council unanimously approved the planning commission recommendation to establish solar energy system standards and then proceeded with first consideration of that particular ordinance. Second item, they unanimously approved with four conditions, the application of Mike Crawl on behalf of M&amp;D Properties LLC to allow the location of two apartment units on the second floor of a building addition to be located in a downtown B2 zoning district. And that's at 101 South Broadway. And I'd like to provide just a little bit of information about that. You may remember that you asked Mr. Crawl to consider three different items. Item number one was to limit alley parking for the new apartments to three stalls rather than four, actually in that particular area, parking off the alley. The second item was to provide landscape space in the eliminated parking stall in adjoining area. And number three was to provide one or more of the required residential parking spaces on the adjoining property owned by Mr. Crawl's partner, Dale Buschert. Mr. Crawl's response to that, which was included in the report to the city council, was as follows. Number one, that the four parking stalls are required in order to accommodate tenants of the proposed apartments. He was not in favor of reducing the number of parking stalls to three. To address the concerns about traffic safety in the alley, he was willing to provide angled parking for his tenants. This would reduce the risk of backing out of those stalls into the alley. And those particular stalls would be angled towards First South Street. So if you came into the alley from First South Street, you know, you would pull directly into them. The second item was, there will be some landscape space provided near the parking area. This will also serve as a place to pile snow in the winter. And number three, he does not own the property at 5...